Daniel.
Here.
Severn.
Here.
Renault.
Here.
Okay, are there any additions to the agenda?
Not at this time.
Okay. Audience participation, communications, notice announcements, we will go to...
Since you're waiting on the student, we can do our public comments first.
Okay.
We do have one, so.
Okay, so, public comments during the audience communication portion of our meetings are valuable and important to this board. However, a Board of Education meeting is not a forum, it is a deliberative and representative body. Our board receives public comments as a source of information and considers each in making decisions and in the establishment of policies. It is our policy to take no action on any item until we have gathered adequate information and objectively discussed available options. During the meeting, the board at its discretion may choose to address an issue raised during public comment, but please understand that lack of action on comments tonight does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow these guidelines. Identify oneself and limit comments to five minutes. Observe the board president's decision to shorten or lengthen the time allowed for public comments. Observe the board president's decision to deny a person's opportunities to speak if that person has addressed the board on the same subject within the past two months. Observe the board president's authority to determine procedural matters regarding the public participation not otherwise defined in Board of Education policy. And conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others and otherwise abid by Board Policy 837, Visitors 2, and Conduct on School Property.
We have one submission, so, Ms. Conroy, if you want to address the board, this is your time to do that, that public comment.
Okay, great, um, can I just sit here and do it?
Sure.
Um, my name is Heather Conroy, I'm a mom of the first grader. And at the last board meeting, it was discussed, I'm the parent, that was talked about, that I had concerns on the BK, LA curriculum. So, I just kind of wanted to publicly address it with the board right now. I did send you all an email, I did ask if you guys would watch the religious presentations, because that's my concern there. It's not the curriculum itself, it's not anything else, because I like the overall, I've done deep dive into it. And I like it overall, but the pieces that I don't like, which seems to be something that others don't like either in the whole nation, because I've done research on other districts and why they've removed it, or paused it, or whatever. And it all comes back to, it's not, uh, it's not doing diverse enough, it's not culturally sensitive, there's a lot of problems with it, and it all goes back to the religious pieces being taught. And so, a lot of districts have modified theirs by taking those religious pieces out. Because I sat there and watched it, so, I don't know, I asked the board if they would go and watch the one for first grade on Islam, and then the one on Christianity. I was, it kind of even raised more concern with me. So, I, I didn't really know that this was being taught until my son said, "There's twenty-five gods." And I just came out of nowhere, and I'm like, "What?" And then he said, "We can't eat from sunup to sundown," like, they just, they're first graders, they just say things, the elves were coming, it was in December, you know? So, I kind of looked and saw, what are we talking about? So, I sat down with the superintendent in December and saw those specific ones. And I'm like, "This is first grade," so I talked to, I talked to our, we said, "Come and talk to you guys," because this is a local thing and something that can be modified maybe, or maybe taken out, maybe needs to be readdressed and looked at. So, I'm really hoping that you guys watched those specific ones and then saw the worksheet that went along with it. That, to me, was just honestly appalling. You have first graders and you have an Excel sheet, worksheet, saying, "Let's compare and contrast these three religions." Three religious religions across the top going down the side, how many gods, how many prophets, what are their books? This is first grade. Why is, why are we talking about this, why are we teaching this? So, a few of my things were that it lacked representation, the curriculum lacks diverse religious background and perspectives, which may lead to a lack of understanding and appreciation for different faiths, because there's only three being talked about. That it was insufficient context, the curriculum may not provide sufficient context for religious references, which could lead to misunderstandings and misrepresentations. I watched those and I was like, "That's not true, why are they saying that, why are they cheer picking, why are this?" So, again, I hope you guys watch those. Biased content, the curriculum may contain biased or insensitive content related to certain religions, which could perceptate as stereotypes or reinforce existing prejudices. And the last one was the age inappropriateness of it, that the concerns, um, the instruction is age inappropriate, which some of the materials are too advanced or complex for younger students, potentially leading to confusion or discomfort when discussing religious topics. I know you said that you talk to your teachers, nobody's raised concerns on this, but to that, I would say, have you done a blind study of the teachers teaching this? Have you done a blind study where they all have to, you know, say how they feel on it blindly? Nobody knows who said what, and really ask those questions. Do you feel comfortable teaching this, do you think that this is age appropriate, you know, go down the line? So, that's what I'm coming here basically with you today on. I don't know if you watched those or saw the worksheets that went along with it when I did my research. A lot of them were concerned with the second and third grade stuff, they didn't even touch on the first grade, which I got to see firsthand. So, those are my concerns, and I really was hoping that the board would review that and also maybe take into consideration the other religions, because I'm hearing, you know, this is the three religions of our nation and this and that. Not everybody participates in studies, and there's a lot of religions out there. So, I would just say, maybe we could do an informed consent and waiver, because I heard during the board meeting, well, if any parent has a concern, they can just opt them out. Well, I don't know, I wouldn't even know that this was being taught had he not said those words to me. So, I wouldn't know that religion was being taught, the fundamentals of certain religions are being taught. It's not culture, it's religion, religions of belief. So, um, I think that there should be a waiver to parents and informed consent to parents, that this is what we're going to talk about, this touches on religion, these religions, and if you don't want your student to participate, here's the form that fell up, kind of thing. Because now you're giving me informed consent, I had no knowledge that this was going on, that this was in there, and what I saw was very disturbing. If you think about it from the big context of how many religions we have and everybody's diverse, and this is very, very disturbing. So, I would encourage anybody from the public to actually watch those first grade lessons and then think about it in a great perspective with all of our students, and are we being diverse and culturally sensitive to everybody here? Because there's a lot more on this curriculum that goes in fifth grade and things that are not historically accurate in how they're portraying things. So, um, where they're giving their information on this religion, you know, think about that. So, those are, those were my things that I wanted to come and ask you to maybe look at. And maybe also with that waiver, you would have to do some modification for IEPs and L, uh, ELLs, because, again, you're dealing with first graders and these very complex topics and a very impressionable age. So, they're getting confused, like, how I found it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to communications and announcements.
Yep, well, we have representation here, we have the student spotlight we want to highlight today. So, if I could ask Dr. Buck, Mrs. Hirth, and Jaclyn, if you can come on up. We want to recognize Jaclyn's amazing artwork, so, you guys come on up here and, yeah, go ahead and let's showcase.
Well, thank you guys for giving us audience tonight and having the opportunity to showcase one of our many outstanding students that are walking the hallway over Eisenhower Jr. High. We've got a lot of great kids, we have a lot of wonderful teachers, but today we have the opportunity to recognize two of our very best and brightest. I'm going to introduce Mrs. Hirth to talk about one of our outstanding students that has been representing our school and our community, or will be representing our school and our community on a national level. We'll very shortly, I'll turn it over to her.
All right, this is Jackie Garcia Fernandez, and she won Best in Show for an art contest by the Illinois Art Education Association. Her artwork here. So, I submitted her work, and then her work was chosen as Best of Show. It will be printed on a flag that will be displayed at the National Art Education Association Conference in Kentucky next month. Her artwork will also be put on a poster showing hers along with other students, and it'll be shared with other art teachers, fellow members across the state. And she will also get, like, over $500 Blick art supply box.
Wow.
That will be lying to her soon.
Whoa.
So, she did an amazing job for this project. We learned about first Byzantine artwork and then Gustav Klimt, and then contemporary African-American artist, Connie Chapman, who also incorporates a lot of gold and pattern in her artwork. So, in art class, try to incorporate history, but then also contemporary multicultural artists too. Amazing job, good job, Jackie.
Jackie. Do you have a name for your art piece? No, no name?
Sunflower.
So, like, is that, did you draw it, is it a picture, is it graphic?
It's scratch art, so we used the scratch art.
Oh, okay.
And then she used an image, and the students had to use part of the image, take some away, and then incorporate line, pattern, texture.
Nice. Very, very nice.
How long did it take you to make that?
What? Well, what was your inspiration, what were you thinking about? If I could daydream like that, I feel like that'd be a pretty happy place.
Have you done other artwork, you make other pieces? Yeah.
On your own?
Sometimes, well, you're very talented, very talented.
Do you get to go to Kentucky too, or is it just going to be?
The conference is during the Springfield trip that I signed up as a chairwoman, so not this year, maybe next year, it's in Chicago next year, last week.
Oh, okay. Congratulations, congratulations.
Congratulations, Jackie, awesome job.
From Eisenhower, congratulations to Jackie, thank you to her mom for being here out here tonight.
Yes.
And thank you, Mrs. Hirth, for providing these amazing opportunities to showcase all of our students.
Do you appreciate the support?
Yeah, honestly, Mrs. Hirth, we appreciate you just showcasing the students' work and submitting. A lot of extra time and effort goes into that, and so, we appreciate the pride you take in, you know, doing that too and helping our students be recognized, so thank you for that.
Thank you. She was a pretty great teacher, right?
Thank you all, nice job, thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Langman? She has to step out real quick, real quick. Should we, yeah.
It is, what time is it is?
Seven thirteen.
Seven thirteen, and Mrs. Pavlu has stepped out of the office, not in the office.
She has stepped out of the meeting.
At seven thirteen for an emergency phone call.
And I thought, did we have any other public comments?
No, we weren't, uh, not at this time, no. We didn't have them submitted.
And then, any FOIAs?
Not at this time. We had some that were submitted, like, in between time, so, we'll show those on the next one.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items four A through four G, five B? Any discussion?
Just that, um, as you can see, we're going to have two teachers at the end of two school years. Mrs. Peña and Mrs. Goschko, who have been up at the district for quite a long time, doing an amazing job, technology, they're retiring, so. We still have them for a couple more years, so, but, um, you know, it's always bittersweet when staff put in for their retirement, you know, good for them, but sad for us, so.
At the same time, too.
So, just like, recognize them.
All right, welcome.
Myers, I, Ramos.
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay, Superintendent's report.
Not too much, um, I just want to take this opportunity really quick, just to remind, district emails went out yesterday, communication. Um, I'm sorry, what time was it? By seven fifteen, so, that Mrs. Pavlu returned. It's okay. Just, uh, the five essential survey from the states for the schools is open, the window is going to be open now, send out communication to the parents. Uh, the state really was right on top, it's not really, because the day opened, that's when we got all the information from the state, so. Uh, but the survey is active right now, so staff will be taking that, students will take that as well, too. Communication now for the parents, but the survey is technically open, but really, you know, if you want to make sure, we're going to push a little bit more from March third through the twenty-eighth is when the window will be open with that, too, so, just as a reminder for that survey.
You did fill out to parents or did?
Well, communicate, communication from, from me, so, yesterday when I sent my communication out to community, information was in there, the initial information, and then the next couple of weeks, we'll send out some reminders, we'll put some stuff on the website as well, too. And then, and I just want to give an update to the board, so I appreciate the board's flexibility. So, next month, we are going to have a presentation update on late starts from a small review team, we're calling it, with, you know, teachers and administrators who've been working on this. Um, and really, the work, I just want to kind of share, just so you have an idea of what the work's been doing, what's been happening, just kind of see what's going on here. But really, what we, you know, we've talked about as a board is, you know, we want to, the board wants to know, like, how is late start going, how's the time being used, what's happening with that? Because it's important for everyone to know, and it's, and these type initiatives, though, too, it's, you know, they are, you know, we have to give them some time to kind of work through that and gather some feedback and everything like that, too. So, in speaking with the teachers, administration, you know, nothing's perfect, so we got together and said, "Hey, what's working? And what can we tweak, how can we make this work better?" And so, that's what this review team is working on, and also to provide information to the board, too. And so, in the last probably like four weeks, met about five times, it's a great team, small team, but they're doing a lot of good work. It's just we met, you know, a couple of times here, we talked about the premise of just reflected on, hey, what, what's working, you know, and what do we want to tweak? The time's working well, the structures are going pretty good, but we felt that some of the conversations can really be a little bit, sometimes maybe too, um, too rigid, you know, and kind of things we're asking for. So, how do we bring back, and we remember here, um, when we did, when we talked about late starts, we discussed the whole premise about the different levels of conversations that were going to occur. And so, the conversations that are occurring are taking place, but what the feeling was is that this time here wasn't happening as much as maybe we anticipated or would like to see. It was really kind of focusing more on these two levels of conversations. And so, when the teams and grade levels meet together for the department team time, even though they're meeting, it may have been as directed as we'd like to see. So, our focus was, is how do we bring this out more, you know, for the times when they're meeting as a grade level, just as their grade levels and our department times, that's where the conversations came from there. And so, then they're going to go, so we did a lot of work through, really, the premises, then what we talked, you can see, we talked about a bunch, but what the staff is going to do now is next week, they're going to review with the staff the updates. And the biggest piece is that we need to clear guidelines and what are the expectations. Here's what late start is, kind of here's maybe what it's not. So, they're going to talk about that and provide that, because we still had some questions, you know, from staff, so we kind of reviewed that. And then we went through to tweak the agendas to streamline it more, because they were kind of paper heavy, you know, should I say, with the document heavy, so we streamlined that, and then also then to the use of data and streamline that, too, so how they can document that with their conversations. And so, the team next week, because at the next late start, which is next week, they're going to sit with the staff, they're going to present, they're going to go over that with the staff, so we have that clear. And then the goal is then to implement these changes, run through these cycles, starting in March twelfth, like, kind of going through, we revamped our calendar, kind of did everything, so you can see that. So, the next, next month, at the March board meeting, that team's going to come, share that presentation, share all the changes, updates, and share what, what has come out of late starts, a lot of, a lot of good decisions have come out of late starts, too. But you, so you can hear it from different voices than just me. So, it's always better hearing it not from me sometimes, so. But, uh, so that's, we just want to give the board an update with that, too, so we took that, so it's, it's, I, I really appreciate the time this, and this group took, because they gathered feedback from the staff and every administration, and we're working to do that, and so then we're going to start with that on next week, and then go from there, and then next board meeting on the eighteenth, we'll prevent, present that to you, so you can kind of see the, you know, what's happening and what's going on with late start.
Yeah, that'll be good, I think everybody was really excited to see, you know, what they come back with.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, and I appreciate the flexibility, because they felt that, in the spirit of collaboration, too, just to making sure that the staff, we had the opportunity to kind of work with them first and take that, and then come back and share everything with the board, too.
Just for clarification, you said revamping of the calendar, you meant revamping of the...
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, I apologize, thank you for that clarification, Dana, yes. So, when I say revamp calendar, not our school calendar, no, 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 just the rotations of the late starts. So, like, for instance, like we presented here, like, you know, we say, "Hey, this is going to be like, you know, maybe the first one," because traditionally, every Wednesday was what we had, every third Wednesday, it was like our, it was called the learning meeting, so like a building time. Well, they kind of kept the rotation, but then they're kind of saying, "Well, why do we have to do that, can't we just rethink kind of these schedules, kind of rethink the rotations," so to say, the rotations will be changed, and how we're approaching that, so that's really what we revamped with that, too, so, thank you for that clarification. Yes, the calendar's not changing, nothing's changed, it's the rotation of those days internally for that setup, that's what, that's what the conversations have, yes.
But before you move on to the IASB land, did you have anything for the enrollment dashboard? I think we kind of skipped over it.
Was it not, oh, did I miss that?
I think we skipped over it.
I'm sorry.
I think we went right into five essentials.
I apologize.
I just want to go back and see if there's anything that we need to...
Well, then, once I've told you, so, any other questions on that board? Okay, I just appreciate, so, okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, enrollment dashboard, it's about the same as it's been the past like two years or so, it's actually a little bit more than three years ago, about ten students more to twenty, so, but pretty steady, so, any questions on this? And again, Keith, I appreciate the dashboard, because it's, it's really nice, it really is. Okay, so now, um, yeah, just lend, uh, with updates, just a couple of things I want to share with the board, too, they just came across my, you know, kind of desk this, just recently. But first off, in Mar, it's March, I can't remember the dates, please, it's the fifth, March fifth is the DuPage Division. So, I think a few of us are going, um, it'll be good, that'll be a good conversation had, too, hopefully they have some updates for us, what's happening in ISB with the budget. There's a lot of stuff happening, again, legislation wise, I mean, I think there's more than a thousand bills kind of being put out there, a number of them from, I gave you guys an update on some of those education ones. If you saw, too, the governor, actually, the first proposal of the budget for education kind of came out. And so, what they're predicting is no increases in budgets, stay the same, so like our EBF funding is going to stay the same but no increases. What they're also showing is that there's no increases for categoricals either. So, like our special education, transportation reimbursements, you know, foods like that, they're really kind of cutting back. Typically, there's a little bit of an increase or a prorate, who knows, they're going to do a proration, but they're showing no increases in those categoricals, even though costs in those areas, because of inflation and costs and transportation, all of those are going up, those categoricals are showing no new monies right now, so, but that's still, you know, in the conversation stage at this point. So, um, but as far as money, we'll still have money, and we can still, you know, receive monies, it's just that there's not going to be any new monies added on to that. So, it's kind of status quo is what they're predicting right now. And the state's kind of in a budget situation right now, and they have a couple billion dollar deficit they have to kind of figure out, too, so. Not much has also come back for conversations with the pension, like tier two. There's some laws and some bills, you know, kind of talk about, but right now, it's basically the two sides are, they've pitched both their extremes. They've pitched their wish list for everything, like, you know, for everybody wants tier two to basically, tier one to better. And then the state basically has said, "Nothing," you know, kind of came back, so now they're at the table trying to figure out what the good medium is going to be for tier two, because again, remember we talked about safe harbor with social security, you know, tier two right now pension does not meet that, so the state has to address that before they start getting into, you know, some fines and some troubles with that, so, they're trying to figure something out, so. But just kind of give a heads up on that and try and keep it from there, so. And again, if you guys can't attend, I don't know, I can't remember if anybody attended the Lent, the last virtual meeting for Lent. It was pretty good, it was good, a lot of information that flies by, but if you can attend, when those come out, you know, let us know if you want to enroll, or if you can enroll yourself, too. I think the next meeting should be in person, um, and typically it's held in Glen Allen and District eighty-nine. So, but they're good meetings they have, too, so if you can't attend, it's a really good opportunity to find out what's happening, you know, in the state legislation piece with that, too. Sorry, I threw a lot out, so. That's, that's really about, that's really kind of all I have for that.
All right, um, so we'll move into Finance Committee.
Uh, any questions concerning the lunch program or the case club board? For Facilities Committee, the big thing that they have is coming up, actually, in our action items for the last few months, Studio DC, multiple engineers and building specialists have been walking through every nook and cranny of our building, and they will hopefully get to us soon a report about what updates they would say, or discussion, rather, or what updates should be considered for our buildings. And then we'll actually be scheduling some walkthroughs through soon, as soon as we get that full report.
So, board members, you'll have an opportunity to come, to walk through the buildings, too, because it's kind of like the last time. So, what we do is we walk through the buildings with the administrators, kind of with the, with the stu, with the engineering group, too, and kind of say, "They got to go through the list, kind of get an idea, anything we missed, like any other thoughts, other things like that, too," so that way it's more gathered information, and then that all information is put together, and then, when we get that, then the Facilities Committee will come back, and then we sit down and prioritize.
It's really like the Santa Claus wish list.
Yeah, it is.
It's like going to Toys R Us and writing all the things down, and then finding out you get none of it.
You know, so, but I mean, yeah, but it's a good, it's a good opportunity, and so, if you can, when we have those, we'll send it out. So, you can come and do that, because, I mean, it's an opportunity also for you to kind of see some of nooks and crannies of the buildings, too.
The locker room?
You know? Yes, the locker room, Karen, thank you. But also, yeah. And having more eyes, that gives us good ideas, you know, with that, too, and so, um, but like the last long-term facilities plan, that'll be kind of like, "Hey, here's what needs to be done in the next five to ten years, and then here's kind of what we are recommending or we'd really like to see, too."
I can't believe we're already like at the end of that.
I know.
And like, we've knocked them off.
We've knocked a lot, we've knocked it quite a bit off, and now we're, yeah, it is, it's really good, and now we're getting to that next, those ones that were big for ten years, now we're coming up to that cycle for some of those. Good thing is parking lots and roofs.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not exciting, but that's what...
It is exciting.
Well, that's what builders would call the envelope, so the envelope is now secured, we don't have any leaks, so now we can focus inward in what's happening.
Yeah, so.
There's always going to be something outward, it just, sorry.
I was just, are there dates for those walkthroughs yet, or not?
Not yet, not yet.
As soon as we get the report and we all can take time to look at that, and then we'll start scheduling one.
Right, Policy Committee?
Well, we're going to talk about the revisions, the updates, and so, the information I shared, we can discuss it at that time, when we actually...
Dana, Darian Educational Foundation. We will be meeting in March. Okay.
Again, thank you for the Darian Foundation, for all the grants, it's awesome.
Good stuff.
I just saw that, um, Sarah, our librarian here, librarian eight here, just shared some great things that's happened with the, with the grant monies, too, with the foundations, so, I'm truly hoping out.
I got to meet up with money last weekend.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, did you?
I did, when I was in DC, we had breakfast, it was great. It was. Okay, we'll go to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
I don't think it this time.
Oh, I saw you there. Future board meeting considering?
I guess this is kind of unfinished business, but, um, I put on here, so I wanted to just kind of, so, when, um, so, Allison, Travis, I went to the legislative breakfast, the Downers Grove, which, thank you both for attending, that was really good, it was good conversations. When we were there, Travis and I were talking about some, you know, thoughts like, "Hey, we need to start planning for some future things that are happening on here." And so, that's where on the bottom there, the future negotiations, TRS discussion, because pension is a huge conversation, who knows what's going to happen with the state, all these different things. And so that's where on the bottom there, the future negotiations, TRS discussion, because pension is a huge conversation, who knows what's gonna happen with the state, all these different things, all that too. So in talking with Karen, that we're compiling, you know, some of the information and then we feel it's best like in June, July, for the board to start reviewing this together. And kind of discussing kind of how we wanna move forward with this and, you know, kind of talk about this and where we're going, because we want to start planning now for some things too. Travis, I don't know if you wanted to share anything else, like with that, you know, for that.
You know, it was just the, just the penalties that get handed out for, you know, the regulations that, that they set down to us and just to make sure that when we're looking forward in the negotiation process, that that's a consideration. I don't, I would like to try to keep away from paying penalties that are unnecessary.
Sure.
It's something that if you didn't know, like if you know, you know, and if you don't, it's a good thing to be educated upon, so that all of us are under the same guidelines. If something happens there, somebody is new to the negotiation table, then this is something you can keep in back of your head. Make sure that you're not, you know, proving something that way wrong, you're like, oh my God, I can't approve that and now this is costing us this and actually be aware of, you know, what the cost of everything is.
Sure.
What penalties get paid? What, you talk about penalties, what penalties get paid?
Yeah, so, so in, yeah, so in the case, so for, with, um, one of the aspects with some of retiring teachers with the updated language in the contract. If they get, you know, so many days back and then, and then they, or their pay goes above six percent based on a provision, then the portion of that pay above the six percent within, you know, because you only go up a certain amount per year within your last four years of retirement. And so there's also, right, yeah, exactly, you're capped. If you go over that cap, or if there's some other issue too, then you, we can, it's, you could do that, but then TRS says, well, you have to pay a penalty because TRS is saying they didn't anticipate that, so they pay a penalty with that too. So, um, I mean, the penalties haven't been, you know, astronomical for us. It's been, you know, just a few teachers were anticipating for that because it's provision, but it's still a penalty. So it's like that aspect we'll talk about and then we can discuss too, like, you know, there's also some things too where, um, you know, like for sick days too, if they have, if we're giving them cer- there's, there's a lot of different things with TRS. TRS is always fun, but it's like that aspect with everybody, when we're talking about salaries, we're talking about, you know, um, all the things that come up. Within a couple of years actually, because now we're already in our second year of four-year contract, so two years away, we start to talk about this. These are questions that came up now, so let's talk about them now so we can start prepare, so everybody has, so everybody's kind of in the know with that conversation there too.
I think the process by starting it in this format will get kind of an habit of, if things come up that we discuss them way before the negotiation table shows up, so that we're not sitting down and like, but wait, why would we be doing this? We've already kind of brainstormed all the way up to them, so that we're more prepared. Just to make it more efficient, you know?
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if there's not a provision already in the CBA, why there wouldn't be one that says it's anyone who enters into retirement, and not, I mean, the language right now, enters into retirement track. Maximum is six percent a year.
There, there is, that, that, that is in there, but there's another provision that, um, provides the ability to get like some days back. And so then from different leave and then that provides, and that changes the timeline for some people with some of those things too, so that there's, there's a little bit in there that's, that affected like about four people with that. So, yeah, so that's, that's where that is. So, but there is language already that says you can't go above the six percent. But there's also, again, there's another thing too, like there's a lot, that's why, the, the, there's so many, that's why we feel it's, you know what, let's just kind of review this now, because, you know, it was brought up, it said, okay, well, let's be proactive. Just so everybody's continuing that, we have some ideas going in, because when the conversations come, everybody's more in the know, like you said, it's gonna be more efficient. We can have that, we thought about all these different things, so then now we have a real sense of where the board's at with everything, so it's more efficient, so we're on the same page and everybody's kind of more informed. So, with that piece, so it's, there is language in there for the six percent already, but then there's a couple other provisions in there too that, you know, sometimes you can predict.
I'm just ignorant to all the details, but I, I'm, I'm not understanding how, I mean, personal experience, when someone goes in a retirement track. In my work life, central office sat down and said, these are your next four-year salaries. In no way, shape or form, extra duty, pay stipends, whatever, it's all included. You're not going to get an increase in a stipend, you know, in the contract it might say, whatever the extra credit may be, it's five hundred this year, it's five thirty-five the next year. Well, you're gonna be at five hundred for the next, if you want the six percent bump. And that was it here, and it was all agreed to before and there were no, it's, it's, it's a discussion from further down the road, I understand that.
Right.
But I just, to avoid penalties, I say it's six percent is six percent.
Yeah, well, and that does happen, but again, what I can do is honestly, if anybody wants to go, Todd, I think, obviously it'd probably be better just to kind of go through it in a separate conversation, so I can definitely walk you through. Because, you know, it's kind of like also too, it's like kind of sensitive, it's, you know, the situation with people, but I can walk you through that piece, you kind of show you like just that. And those, there's like I said, a small number of cases ran into for that, so you can kind of see from there too, because, um, again, just a matter of just trying to be proactive and just, you know, so when it comes time, which is not where we'll let down the road, but at least we're being, you know, efficient and we're doing this. And plus two, honestly, it was a good idea to do because the pension stuff keeps changing and who the heck knows, you know, with everything too. So can we maybe try and stay ahead and be in the know in the conversations so we can now start planning now, so. Yeah, I def- honestly, I'll just sit down, we can go through that too, because, um, and kind of go from there, so.
And especially now, where you do work, people on the board that aren't in education or education adjacent, they would have never known this. You know what I mean? And it's, you know, hard to be on that aspect of it, whether it's small or large, having that applicable knowledge to the system makes us better at our job.
Hundred percent. So, I just want to make sure we address that because, you know, this, so we, so we, because it came up and so there'll be a, that's on there for that too.
Yeah. So June, July, just to.
Yeah, that's what we talked, yeah, because then we'll have the new board seated, gonna go through a couple of times, it'll be a good time to kind of maybe start then. You know, we're already starting to talk about the draft budget, this is gonna be a good time to kind of just kind of review everything. And we can determine when we want to do that, we can talk about that in the closed session, you know, or we can, you know, then start, honestly, it'd be a good idea to start talking about, is there a small group or maybe a committee to start, you know, doing this too and taking that? And so just having those conversations is how the board wants to, you know, continue on with that too.
Sounds good.
I did have, um, I, maybe add on for future consideration, just as we're thinking about, um, some of the things happening in Washington and what impact they might have on us financially as a district. I know the majority of our budget is local tax base and state, but I don't know if the state dollars are funnelled through our pass-throughs from federal funds? And then how much of what we actually have is federal direct, I don't, um, not aware of that, but if there's an opportunity in a future meeting to just get a sense of, you know, of our revenues. What has, what has either passed through from the federal, uh, Department of Ed or directly from the Department of Ed? And do we as a district need to think of contingencies or what are our options should funding not be available? I don't know if we're in that situation right now. I know there's a lot of, this is happening, this is not happening week to week. Um, but just so we can be prepared as a district, if we need to be able to respond to making sure we can continue to fund things that do have, uh, federal financial backing.
Yeah, I think we could, we could have emails, but I think it's good for the public to know.
Yeah, that conversation.
You know, especially when there's the, when funding was being held for that twenty-four hours, and within higher education, it put us through a lot of headaches with some of the, uh, federal grants and funded programs.
Yeah.
Breathe a little relief the day after, but, you know, just so we as a district are prepared if there is any impact, uh, on our district and our, um, conditions of teaching and learning.
Yeah. Is that kind of?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Well, can I recapture what you stated? I just want to make sure. I think it's a good idea too, yeah, we can just talk about it here with that, yeah, because, because, I mean, just to that point though, there is so much that is unknown, you know? And I know we've, I've shared, you know, like you said, you know, Travis, like information with the board, like, hey, here's about the appropriate amount, about four percent, you know, or, but, but, you know, what are we gonna do if something happens? So, you know, at least then we can talk about, hey, here's some contingency plans, A, B, or C, or whatever, you know, but honestly, it's, it doesn't sound like any funding's being cut. Um, it's just a matter of it might be managed by different, um, agencies in the government, but it sounds like the core funding is not going anywhere. It's just a matter of who's distributing it and then how it's being distributed to the states too. Honestly, the, the intention is to just give it to the states and let the states go from there and hopefully they get it down to the local level, you know, the decisions being made, which honestly is pretty good, you know? But our state, they like to add a lot of layers, you know, so. But really, but the money should be there, but again, they could change tomorrow, you know, so, but I think that's a good idea if we kind of just say, hey, if this was the case, here are some things we're talking about that, you know, some, because you don't want it to cut pro- We want to keep the cuts as far away from the students as possible, right? So what would that be type of thing, you know, if B? Because it's a, it's a decent amount, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars, so, yeah.
And maybe it's a, we are selling funds, but instead of getting it in three months, we're gonna get it in nine months, so I'd be able to float that.
Correct.
Teacher body.
Sorry, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our action items. Can we get a motion, uh, for the board to approve the second reading of suggested policy revisions?
It's unmoved. Second.
Pod, okay, discussion?
I just, so Anthony asked. Some question we were talking about last time, the biggest discussions about policies four sixty and four one fifty. But of last time at the board member, at the board meeting, but then some further information was asked to the, you know, with, the whole premise behind four sixty is that the state changed the level of when you're required to go out to bid to thirty-five thousand dollars. That's four sixty. And then four one fifty is our facilities piece, but our language and the facilities language is that the board must approve any, um, facilities or maintenance, anything like that, you know, uh, work or, you know, um, you know, acquired materials or resources that is, it was before twelve thousand five hundred, it was half twenty-five, so now it'll be the seventeen five, which is half of the, you know, required bid amounts. So that's where this is. So, Anthony, is there, can you guys, can you, can you just kind of give us an idea of like what type of things would have been there, you know, around this type area, like what was the procedure from that too? So, I kind of, I'm not gonna go through the list, but I gave you guys this. Really, what the whole premise is, just, just so the board knows, that procedural wise and practice, it's really not gonna change much. Because as you can see, a lot of the elements are about twenty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, it's mainly mostly about our facilities, um, and maintenance with that work. And if we feel that, you know, there are times for bids that happen, that may be better to go to bid, you know, we're pricing the twenty-five, less, and then we'll do that too. Um, just the thirty-five thousand means we have to do it then, but it doesn't mean we're not going to do it if it's different amounts too. And as you can see here, some of the technology aspects that are bigger purchases with that too, um, that doesn't mean that we're not pricing those outs. And that also too, we work with our vendor, uh, like CDW we work with, a lot of districts do, they actually have a bidding process built into their purchasing too. So the prices are, you know, sought out, we have that as well too, uh, but it's just a matter, just so you had some context in there, so I just want to make sure that everybody had that. And if there's any more questions about the amounts and the procedures and anything else that you had in your mind with this.
Well, I think in everything that was provided, the CDW that you mentioned on the second page or last page, that was through that internal bidding process.
Yeah.
So perhaps, actually not the construction, because that would have been the fifty percent of the amount anyway, that would have been gone out to bid anyway, so, you know, this is good data for us.
You know, and our practices though too is honestly, we don't, I mean, if, if it's something we're gonna go to the board, if it's not part, like sometimes like some of these, like the technology plan, approved technology plans, either purchases when the technology, but even if it's a big purchase, like the copy machines or, you know, other things too. We're coming to the board saying, hey, here's what this is, approval, or we're talking about it, we're sharing this too, um, so with that, because, I mean, you know, we're, it's just, that's just kind of the nature of that and the hopes of the transparency too. Uh, but also know that Frank is really good at trying to find the best prices of things. So with that, you know, those little purchases too, so. He really is. So any other questions on that? Okay, I think again, the policy committee for the time, because there's a lot to go through.
Welcome.
Hi, Myers.
Hi.
Daniel.
Hi.
Stefan.
Hi.
For now.
Hi.
Buckles.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, board.
Now can we get a motion to approve, uh, the architectural services proposal, Studio G C facility assessment and ten-year health, life, safety survey? I will.
Second.
Okay. You can have it, Allison.
Excuse me.
Discussion?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Quick, speak to this.
Yeah, so, so this is, uh, what we discussed that during the facility time, is that we've had multiple engineers and building managers walk through our buildings. Um, not only on the inside but the outside, looking at the structure, opening every door, looking at electrical panels. And so that's what we will see in the brief here, coming in the cou- next couple of weeks. Um, it will have a review of each building, electrical needs, building needs, room needs, and then like some of those other things that we talked about. You know, possible, um, a good example is ISL moving up their front, their office from the middle of the building, which is a, um, which is an issue logistically for schools. And moving that to the front where it would be better posted, so how much would that cost? So those are the things that we'll be looking at in the prices agency.
So, you're just approving the proposal because they're doing the work, it's just the.
The sixteen thousand is to cover that assessment for all three buildings.
And it's also given us an updated life's, life, um, safety plan, which is coming up due in twenty twenty-six. Every ten years you have to do that, so we're just ahead of the game with that, so, um, it's up, so we might as well just do it at the same time.
Any other questions?
Oh, also, let's see, when is the plan, when would it be completed?
Well, hopefully in the next few weeks actually.
So if there's any like recommendations that have financial implication that'll be included in like budget processes for future.
Yeah, so we hope, hope that that pack will lead discussions on what we should be planning for budget wise.
And also then too, this, the information that's derived from these plans then, is also then the driver for our conversations with, you know, to plan out the referendum feasibility committee. Because you're gonna see there's, there's a lot, we, I mean, our schools are in good shape, they are, but they also need some updating and there's some things we'd like to do too. And you're, you can see it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not cheap for that too, especially things we want to have for that too, so, um, you know, and as much as I like this carpet, you know, it's nice to see some different things too like that. It's like, it's just those, but there's a lot that we have to do across all three buildings with that too.
You ready? Ramos?
Hi.
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 Buckles?
Hi.
Bradley?
Hi.
So now, the fun stuff. Uh, can I get a motion to go into closed session for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who service in department contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting or a specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony out of complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who services an independent contractor in a park, recreational or educational setting or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. That's one sentence, anyway. However, I'm meaning to consider an increase in compensation to. Or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public to determine its validity, that's one sentence, anyway, however, I mean, to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. May not be closed, and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. Second?
Who was second?
Dana. Okay, it is seven fifty P M.
Okay. Um, with the board, just because again, for like recording purposes and everything too, would you mind going down back to the, to the, um, conference room? Oh, the roll call, oh, that's, did we do roll call vote? I apologize, we didn't do roll call vote, I'm sorry to go into actual session, just, um, first and second, sorry, I apologize Travis, it was too quick.
Oh, to go into closed session, yeah.
Yeah. Go through everybody again, yeah, sorry.
Hi.
Bradley?
Hi.
Myers? Ramos?
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Hi, thank you, Janelle.
Thank you, okay, sorry, now.
I was just waiting.